Thank you, Rick.
Welcome. I would like to begin with your eyes and will come clear and followed by the pledge. On behalf of becoming you this morning, we're mindful and thankful for our country and those freedoms we enjoy. Most of all, we're thankful for those veterans that paid the price. We can have this freedom. I know also that serve in our community and those around about us would pray for their safety and watch over them. Today, we have county business. We ask for direction and wisdom as we make those decisions. We ask for your blessing and praying, Christine.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and for all.
First meeting I've not been able to attend for my nine plus years in office and kind of makes it mittersweet, but hopefully everything will be back for the next meeting here. First item of business, and I guess we'll start with this, the minutes they were sent me an email and the alterations or corrections on the joint change motion. And we're hoping you roll call with this.
Michael Vanover, so moved. Seconded.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll need the roll call vote for that. So Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Three zero.
All right. First, next item of business is the financials payroll per calendar year 2021, which is number 23, totals $238,585.30. The 261 claims totaling $357,902.22. I'll entertain a motion for the financials.
So moved. Seconded.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Three zero.
All right. Next up, we have Scott Holliday. You have the floor.
As of this morning, we have 74 inmates in jail. 28 of those are pretrial superior, 22 pretrial circuit, 13 F6, and 7 DOC. So our numbers have picked up since the last meeting. Nothing special to report, other than just construction is going, started two weeks ago. So everything's just day to day as far as what they're working on next. So they'll be cutting holes in the wall today to start setting up our temporary intake so that we can get started on that. But other than that, we've just been trying to stay in touch with them. We're having biweekly meetings with them to try to stay on track with what we're doing there. So other than that, I don't have anything else to report.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Scott. Sean, looking out for us today.
Morning.
We're coming in with the starting the road conversion last week. We're going to try to get that completed, or not completed, finished, but what we can do this year, if the weather holds up with us. We've been out in winter prep patching all of the paved roads, getting them ready for winter. We're upgrading, trying to keep the gravel roads up to par. And then we will be sending out bids for bituminous, stone, dust day, and fuel. And we're looking at advertising on November 18th, December 2nd, with an opening of January 3rd. Howard Benefield has officially retired, and we're looking to start interviewing next week at the soonest for his replacement. That's all I got.
Okay. Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Nate, we have you next. You have a chat log for us today?
I do. Yours will be in the mail.
I think I've got about seven or eight attachments open, so.
There you go. All right. Well, first thing, kind of a big item, is the NDOT Notice of Funding Availability for Fiscal Year 2027. We've got three projects that the county is considering applying for. I started the applications, but there's a few documents that I need before we can submit. The first one, as far as the top priority, we're looking at funding the remainder of the County Road 200 South. This would be Phase Two, connection between Clark Street, Hoosier Highway, and State Road One. We've got funding for the rail overpass from Adams Street over to the intersection of Hoosier and Clark Street, but we need to do the remainder to go past Ellingham, over the gas lines, and connect it to State Road One. NDOT didn't have enough funding available for us to do all of it in one chunk, so we're looking at doing this in two pieces. There is already an existing interlocal agreement between the county, the city, and the city redevelopment district, so that actually splits that project in three pieces as far as the local funding source. But the county is the primary applicant. That's why I'm having presented to you a funding commitment letter for that project. So that would be our first project priority for us. The other two that we've been looking at as far as alternates or additional options are Bridge 72. This is 300 West over the Stites Ditch. And then Bridge 76. Last week, I received cost estimates from USI based on our engineering assessment agreement with them, and I put together funding commitment letters accordingly that cover both the PE portions of the project, as well as right-of-way construction, construction inspection. Bridge 72, let's make sure I've got the right one here in front of me. Bridge 72, their estimated total project cost, including all those phases, is $2.285 million, with a local match of $457,100. It's a federal grant request of about $1.8 million for that project. The other alternate project is Bridge 76. That's 500 West over the Mossburg Ditch. Their estimated project cost is $2.627 million with a local match of $525,400. That'd be our local commitment. We can do, we could apply for both. We could apply for one. We could apply for none of those two bridges. It really kind of depends on what your commitment, what your willingness is on these. I've got the local match or the funding commitment letter identifying the cumulative bridge fund as the source, with an option to use local option income tax as a portion of that. So we won't know if we apply, there'll be an opportunity for an interview, probably in late January, early February. And then the announcement for this wouldn't come until probably first week of April of next year, when we find out about these projects. So I'm requesting approval on, certainly on Project One, but if you're interested in doing the other two, we could certainly make the applications. We'd have these. I would just need the funding commitment letter signed today so that I can turn that all into the state. Application closes December 1st. I think it's that Friday of the last Friday.
Nate, my question is, on 72, is that the bridge just north of Joe Coburn?
I don't know the answer to that. That one would be 72 just north, I think it's between two and, or three and four south.
Okay. Does we have a traffic count on that one of about how many vehicles per day, per week? Utilize that? Is that a stone round or is that?
The 72? No, no, this is old, this is old State Road 303. The 76 is on 500 West over the Mossburg Ditch, and that one is, this one is a chip seal road as well. So the chip seal or asphalt with a chip seal overlay. The 500 West is a very low volume road, so the estimates that I have for traffic counts are less than 100 on Bridge 76. The reason Bridge 76 is so much more is there's about five times the watershed area that's crossing underneath that bridge. The next bridge is actually a three-span, or one of the next bridges is a three-span bridge carrying that water. So that one certainly is, is, Bridge 76 is certainly undersized. That's why it's, we've left enough money in that project to make it a three-span, as the hydraulic analysis says it has to.
If we would, if we would turn this down, what would be the likelihood of us getting funding to give this project back in 2022?
Certainly. I mean, you're not, you're not even turning it down. You're just not asking for the funding. It's just if there's an open window, we just want to be ready to try to turn these in. You could turn this at the next funding availability. You can just wait on these. And federal aid isn't the only way to fund these sort of projects. It's just these two aren't eligible for federal aid, where other bridges aren't in a condition that would allow you to get federal funding for them. So if you decide that you didn't want to move forward on these, that's certainly up to, up to you as the commissioners.
You've got to tell the summer first anyway, right?
Yep, but I need to have these letters signed by you prior to the application. So this is the last, this is kind of my last opportunity to ask for your signatures on these letters. So if you wanted to have a, if you didn't take action on it, then I need to have some time when the commissioners would vote to proceed.
Is there, is there any guess on what the infrastructure bill the president's going to sign today is going to have on federal funds available for these projects?
It's going to throw gasoline on the fire, so it's certainly going to have some impacts. We've got a healthy contingency built into these. That's why these projects seem so large by comparison. There's a 20% contingency built into these requests already.
Is there more reason to submit them all rather than back off on your whole back one?
Since these would be fiscal year 2027, anything that's built into a lot of these funding packages is, we're probably going to ride the wave of infrastructure packages. These may, the market may change significantly in that five years.
I'm just thinking the commitment the county's going to be responsible for.
Sure.
The predecessors account, or the people that come after us, is the obligation we've, you know, put them in to make sure the funding stays there or comes up with new funding. I'm just, I'm a little hesitant with projects already indicating that we
Correct.
Have adequate funding.
Yeah. Yeah. No, I, that's hopefully I'm getting it.
The project, great, don't get me wrong. Just thinking of commitments financially.
I think I'm okay pushing this forward and waiting.
Okay, just kind of push these for a year until the next funding cycle.
The use of the local match isn't required till 2027 also, right?
The first dollars of this wouldn't come out until 2023, if you were even awarded. So, and that would just be for the preliminary engineering phase. So many of these actually are very backloaded when it comes to the local match.
So there's no failure risk or anything like that? Nobody's going to get injured? It's just these are the last two on our list?
Yeah, these are, one of the, these are the back two on these. They didn't have any critical findings during this last October's inspection report. They're certainly eligible for replacement because they're scour, they're certainly scoured because they're, they're undersized hydraulically. Certainly, the 500 West bridge is probably the worst of the two. And whenever you're working in years of five-year cycles, I mean, it's still 21, this is 27 fiscal year, which runs even to July of 2028. So there's, there's, a lot can happen in that timeframe. So certainly when we're putting these sort of schedules together, but I'm certainly open to options. We'll keep watching it, and worst-case scenario, we'll make, we'll make measures appropriate for it. It's, when I first started, we probably had 15 to 20 bridges that were federal aid eligible. So to have only two that are, that are meeting that criteria is a really good sign for us. So that's, that's very good. So I'm, I'm less concerned about bridge conditions right now, but I always am. That's my job. So, but yeah, that's fine. But I guess I would ask to then proceed with the County Road 200 South, since we already have an agreement with the city that
Absolutely. Definitely going to go over for sure.
All right.
Totally agree with that.
So I'll entertain a motion to move forward on the 200 South and put on pause the other 76 and 72.
So moved. Seconded.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Three zero.
All right. Update, Bridge 99, that's Hoosier Highway in the Ash Road intersection area. Work is scheduled to be completed this week, once the road's open to traffic. Notice will go out to the schools and emergency personnel so that those routes can be opened up. So we're doing some end-of-the-year paving work at this point, so we're really kind of on the ragged edge of what's reliable for getting asphalt down. So I'm glad to get it done, at least when we can. We said we'd be done by Thanksgiving, and we're, we're making it. Not a whole lot of extra cushion, though, unfortunately. Community crossings mentioned grants, the 2021-2, it's already been reported, it came out in the media. Wells County was awarded $266,000 and $400 there for construction of Bridge 403. That's for County Road 800 South, one of our small structures. I'm working with USI to schedule a bid date. We're hoping to try to get a bid date as soon as we can. There's final technical specs we've got to complete, make sure our permits. I just saw some of the permit paperwork go through last week, once the award happened. So we're going to try to look for advertising here in December for a possible January or early February bid opening. So that one's another, another good project. For us, we'll keep using the community crossing system. January will be another call for community crossings, so we're getting some projects together, and I'll be coming back to you in December, first week in January. Looking forward to those projects as well. So we'll keep, keep rolling. I have two geotech investigations. I'm requesting approval for geotech investigations for a small structure. This is a Liberty Center 960. That's a small pipe crossing, actually, of 300 West. And for those that are familiar with the area, you'll, you'll know it, over 400 South. The location is an apparent peat bog that the old State Road 303 crossed. We're looking to do some cores of the subsoils to see what condition we're looking at for those, for that pipe. The pipe certainly needs to be replaced. The road sunk there multiple times in the past, apparently, but I want to try to make sure that we get a good replacement of that and know what I'm dealing with. So I'm asking for your approval on a geotech report before borrowings for a fee of, an estimated fee of $4,250, as we come out of lit. Also requesting approval for another geotech report for Wells County Bridge 65. That's another structure we're looking at replacing. It's on Jeff Road, just north of 1200 South. It carries over a branch of the Salomonie River. It's actually not the Salomonie River. It's a little branch that feeds into it there very close. Fulton Witsick is going to meet NDOT standards for that application, or that geotech report. Estimated fees to be between $15,000 and $18,000. We're going to do a little more investigation into that one because of kind of the rock type and what we're dealing with for that bridge.
Then I have a motion on the floor. From Lake Worth.
I'll make, I, I will move that.
Second?
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Three zero.
I have on here utility permits, but that actually has been pulled. I don't have the full application yet. That's with, in conjunction with the City of Fort Wayne, they haven't finished their reviews on that proposal yet. So once I have that, I'll bring that to you. I did, it's not in my notes, but you do have a copy of the local tracks, preliminary schedule, and estimate breakdown. So that's just the latest update that they've given. The letting date was moved a couple months ago now to March 15th of 2023, so that's when that'll go out to bid, or the bid will be due for that project. So, so you can see the updates on that. No changes in the construction cost or what the county's local match would be at this point. So really, we're on a holding pattern until the bids come in and we see what, what, what we're left to pay towards that project. And then the last one I have is any right-of-way dedications we have. I don't have any that I've received. I'm not sure, Roy.
I've got four.
Roy's got four. I'd recommend approval on those right-of-ways.
Plus, I've got a, you know, the county, county and the city have discussed assignment of the county's right-of-way for, what is it, 200 North on Madison, from the county to the city.
Oh.
And I have draft of an assignment for the county commissioners to sign to assign that
Okay.
Right-of-way to the city.
That's the section between an annexation, two annexations. There was a gap between the two, so we're turning that right-of-way over, so they've got a contiguous
Right. Between the states of Parma, City, and Woodlands, or
Yep.
Or Woodlands, right?
Yep.
I'd recommend that.
Yep.
So moved. Seconded.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Three zero.
All right. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Do we have any from the audience?
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, Andy.
Good morning, ladies. You all have granted family medical leave to one of my employees, and she needs an extension. Medical situation continues. She'd like an extension of three days of that. And I don't know when it was necessarily set to expire. I'm probably going to have to come back and ask for one more extension after that, and I'll know specifically dates at that time. I think she's, she's going to be ready to come back after the first of the year.
This would extend her leave till December 24th.
Okay. And you have just one more meeting then in December?
Yes.
So you put me back on your agenda for December 6th?
No, there's two. I'm sorry. December, what's the, second meeting in December?
6th and 20th, I believe.
20th?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. If you put me on the agenda for that, then I will know specifically what she needs that extension to at that time when she comes back to work. I think it's going to be right after the first of the year.
I am, I'm sure doing that.
Yep.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion.
Seconded.
On the paper, aye?
Aye.
Blake Gerber?
Aye.
Michael Vanover?
Aye.
Jeff Stringer?
Aye.
Three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Andy. Do we have an update with, with Marlene?
Yes.
I know we turned orange.
Yes, we did.
Went from 1.5 to 2, so.
Yes, yes. So we have went to orange. We've seen a rise in the cases. I think there's been 25 new cases since a week, about two weeks ago. So obviously, it's still alive and well here in Wells County. We've seen about 40 new cases as far as the testing, and so that raises that positivity rate. So that makes a big difference. The last time you had talked about getting some numbers on the deaths that are occurring, I reported then either 88 or 89 deaths on that day, and we've risen, rose to 92 deaths, one new. Right now, some of those deaths are being moved from one county to the other, mainly because their actual residency was here, but they might have been in a nursing home in another area, and/or the cases are being reviewed for whether or not COVID was a diagnosis. So I can't give you a full report like I was hoping to, but it's, it's just being scrutinized right now as far as some of those to have jumped from the 89 to 92 deaths. So we've had 4,444 new cases and 25 new since the last one, so that's what's making our numbers go back up. Any questions?
No.
We're still doing the testing on Monday mornings and all day on Thursday. Monday afternoons, we're doing the vaccines. It's mainly boosters. We still have some that's coming through. Some of the industries have required that their individuals or their employees be tested by a certain, or be vaccinated by a certain date, so we are getting a few first vaccines in as well. Our schedules are full. We're now scheduling into next week as far as the boosters go, so.
Okay.
Thank you, Marlene.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Uh-huh.
I see Jessica come in. I don't see her yet, but I think she's back in the corner.
Somewhere.
There she is.
I was hiding.
You're up.
Hiding from you.
Thank you.
He does not have that.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
All right. Good morning, everybody. Here to talk about your health insurance renewal, which is through PHP, which stands for Physician's Health Plan out of Fort Wayne. Also in here, we're going to talk about your dental vision and life renewal, which is through Principal. So this is kind of the crazy, busy time of year. A lot of groups renew January 1st. The average renewals that we've been seeing is 12 to 15%. That's kind of the average just across the board, the trend increase that a lot of carriers provide or give out to groups. Yours is not that, I'm happy to report. So on that third page, at the top, PHP's initial renewal came in at 15%. So again, that was a little bit higher, but it was based off of your claims experience, which we'll kind of go through here in a minute. I was able to work with PHP and negotiate that down to 5%. So not only is that under the, the average increase, but when you look at your guys' your group's claims experience, that's, is a very positive situation with that. So 5% across the board is fantastic in the fact that you also have a 35% refund agreement. What that means is that Wells County is fully insured, so you know, you pay the claims regardless of your experience. However, we have, I put this refund agreement in place a while, a few years ago, which means when you, when your plan does run well, then you get to share in that surplus, and you receive 35% back as a check back to Wells County. So it's kind of the best of both worlds. So you're fully insured. Other groups out there might be self-funded. However, you're structured as such as you have the protection of being fully insured. So when you have a rough claims year, like you've had this year, you know, you have that protection, but every year is different. So when you have a good claims year, you'll be able to receive a refund check back, which you have in the past, so, which is nice. When we look at your current claims experience, that next section down, your loss ratio is right now at 92%. What that means is you want the target to be in between 70 to 80%. That's the sweet spot from a carrier perspective. That means your total claims don't outweigh the premium you're paying. So you're getting, it's, it's been a pretty hot claims year for Wells County. I thought it was interesting to note, so whenever I receive your renewal, I'm always talking to the underwriter, just, you know, I have claims reports, but I always want to talk to them. If, if it had just been issued, the underwriting, underwriting calculation for your group, I was actually calling for a 31%. So that's how an Anthem or United Healthcare, that's how they issue their renewals, and I'm not beating up on it outside carriers, but just, it's just the fact of how it is. So you, your group was actually calling for a 31%. So again, they came out with a 15, down to five. You've had several high claimants, just several series of conditions that the underwriters kind of keep an eye issued, the underwriting, underwriting calculation for your group, I was actually calling for a 31 percent. So that's how Anthem or United Healthcare, that's how they issue their renewals, and I'm not beating up on it outside carriers, but just, it's just the fact of how it is. So you, your group was actually calling for a 31 percent. So again, they came out with a 15, down to five. You've had several high claimants, just several series of conditions that the underwriters kind of keep an eye on. You had an 85,000, you had a 75,000, and another 70,000. So just a handful of high claimants. A high claimant is considered anything that's 50,000 or more. Okay? We did include an alternate from PHP, which, you know, would provide a 2 percent increase instead of the five. The deductible and out-of-pocket would go up. And from a carrier perspective, that's the way you move the needle on the premiums, is, you know, you play around with that deductible and out-of-pocket amount with that. So part of my job is I obviously handle your renewal, open enrollment time, mid-year reviews, kind of go over how you guys are running. But obviously, comes with that is looking at outside options, which we do every year. So I'm always looking at Anthem, United Healthcare, Cigna, so best-in-class carriers. So Anthem came in at zero. So it would be like receiving a 0 percent. They do not have an integrated HRA, which you have in place today with PHP. So you have that, you know, that integrated health reimbursement arrangement through PHP, and it would also have a higher deductible and out-of-pocket. So typically, whenever we get a competitive proposal, number one, I can take that back to PHP to help negotiate it down. But also, we want to see at least a 10 percent differential between carriers in order to make a move to a carrier, to make it worth the trouble of, of kind of transitioning carriers. United Healthcare, I have UHC there. So United Healthcare came in at 11 percent over current, so obviously not competitive. As far as a level funded option, which Cigna is a best-in-class carrier for, they declined a quote, just saying they couldn't deliver a competitive proposal, kind of a, you're not, yeah, it was gonna be well over where you're at today. Are there any questions on your PHP renewal, outside options, claims experience?
I don't, no.
Okay. As far as the, the PHP renewal, it would be my recommendation to renew as-is with that portion, just for the record. And then if you drop down to the principal, so the principal, so again, they handle your dental, vision, group life, voluntary life. They initially came in at 5 percent, vision zero, group life at 9 percent, voluntary life at zero. Was able to negotiate the dental and group life down, so all lines of coverage are receiving a 0 percent, along with a two-year rate guarantee. So those negotiated rates would stay locked in for two years. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay. If you'd like to go through, so this is kind of the, the meat and potatoes of it, but the actual rates. On page four, you see your current plan design here. How it works is it's a $6,000 deductible. Wells County employee would pay the first three. Wells County reimburses anything after that. So the first 3,000, so it feels like a 3,000 deductible for an individual, 6,000 for a family, which is a very competitive, high deductible amount, and also includes that 35 percent refund agreement. The rates can be found on page five. So on page five, you see your, your census as far as, you know, how many are enrolled in each tier. You have 115 enrolled employees. You see your current monthly rates at the top, and the middle section column, that's your original 15 percent, and then going down to the 5 percent overall. And whenever I run the benchmarking tool on your overall costs, just the cost of claims, your overall cost of your plan is actually right within the average, like the national averages is in between 12, 9 to 12,000. Yours is 11,645. So my point is that you're right, right in the national average of total plan costs. Page six is that alternate plan design I mentioned, that would cause you to have a 2 percent instead of the 5. But again, if you look at the rates on page seven, in my opinion, it doesn't really move the needle that much to, I mean, you provide some savings. So, I mean, you would keep the, the employee portions still the same, so they would still have the first 3,000, family have the same 6,000. Wells County would just take on that additional exposure. So, but it is an option. So we always want to provide alternate options to you. And the next pages on eight and nine are the Anthem plan design, United Healthcare plan design, and those rates are on page 10. So you see your current, you revised at 5, Anthem, and then United Healthcare, off to the right.
Based on what I've seen, I would recommend sticking with the PHP with a 5 percent increase. Do you guys have additional questions for Jessica?
Thank you for looking out for us.
Yeah.
When does the enrollment start for everybody? Is it electronic?
So the open enrollment is the month of December. This is all for January 1st. I talked to Lisa as far as possible meeting dates, kind of exploring that option, but communicating to employees so that the month of December is when they can make changes to their current elections. Is that...
And they do it all online, or?
So it's, right now, it's done through paper.
Is it?
Mm-hmm. So we're, we talked about an online option, perhaps next year. So...
Perhaps.
So it is an option. We've gone through it. There's a demo that, that was done. So it's definitely out there. So being explored for sure. Yeah. And then the last thing, yeah, if you want to look at the rates on 13, that's the revised renewal for the principal. But it's all at 0 percent, and again, with a two-year rate guarantee.
I'd move to stick with this plan. Seconded.
Home favor, aye?
Aye.
Blake Gerber.
Aye.
Michael Vanover.
Aye.
Jeff Stringer.
Aye.
Three zero.
Thanks, Jessica.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
For your time.
Thank you, Jessica. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
And since we're talking about health insurance, the employee portions of their health coverage, a single employee pays $51 a month, employee children 155, employee spouse 200, family 309. Did you want to keep those the same for 2022, or adjust them in any way? Can you hear me, Blake?
I can.
Okay.
I say we keep them. That's what they paid last year?
Yes.
Yeah, identical to last year, correct. I would support that.
So moved. Seconded.
Motion second.
Second.
Home favor, aye?
Aye.
Blake Gerber.
Aye.
Michael Vanover.
Aye.
Jeff Stringer.
Aye.
Thank you.
Now we have an amendment to resolutions, Resolution 2021-16, use of construction manager.
Okay. The purpose of the resolution is to add two additional members to the evaluation committee. And so the resolution would add Commissioners Vanover and Stringer to the evaluation committee.
Are we using individually, Roy, or together?
That's one resolution. The same resolution adds both of them.
Okay, perfect. I would support that. And in fact, I'll make that motion.
Second.
And that is Resolution 2021-24. Blake Gerber.
Aye.
Michael Vanover.
Aye.
Jeff Stringer.
Aye.
Three zero. And then the county highway garage.
Okay. The evaluation committee recommended the selection of Jackson Construction, and they made that recommendation to the commissioners. So it's up to the commissioners to act on that recommendation and decide if they're, if they're prepared to hire, make a decision on hiring a construction manager.
I think we'd like to accept that recommendation.
And hire Jackson.
Correct.
Hire Jackson.
Seconded. Home favor, aye?
Aye.
Blake Gerber.
Aye.
Michael Vanover.
Aye.
Jeff Stringer.
Aye.
Three zero.
And then RQAW?
Commissioners asked me to draft a letter to RQAW. I did. I sent it to them, and I hadn't heard back from anybody. So I don't know if you're...
When was that sent?
Okay, they want me to send that.
Oh, you want to send, okay. Yeah.
I haven't sent it, because I've...
You have not. Okay, okay.
Is it worth just getting everybody in the same room and talking it out, or letter first and then do that?
Well, you asked me to draft a letter, you know, and, and so I did go through all the documents. The only thing that I could see is, I think there's $1,000 left on what you have been billed and not paid. The terms of the contract were that after they've been paid in full, then you're entitled to the documents, but there's limitations on. And the letter acknowledged that, we acknowledge the limitations, like you can't, you can't use those as construction documents. They have no liability for that, but...
So with what they were scheduled to give us and what they gave us, does that equate to the $21,000 worth of product?
I don't know. Their own letter, their own letter, Josh Goodman's email said there's two stages. One stage was, was the drawing, and that's where we are. We're, we're at them coming up with, you know, that, that status of plans. And I discussed that with Nate. I said, well, Nate, you know, do you have everything you're supposed to have? And he said, no. And Nate told me exactly what he wanted, and that's the plans. And you said CAD CAM?
Yeah, AutoCAD and PDF copies of the documents that they prepared.
So what they have prepared is suffice?
All we have are paper copies, some interim drawings. We just want documents of where they stand right now.
So should the letter, Roy, be, we'll pay your $1,000 contingent upon delivery, or within so many days of paying, we get...
I think that's very close to what it was going to be. I don't know if it says that offer exactly, but we acknowledge that they billed us for some additional...
We checked with the auditor's office and, and got all the invoices as well as what we've paid. So we're, we're 1,000 less than what we have been billed.
Yep. The Commissioners just handled all the last, the last invoice. It's outstanding. And that was, that was invoiced either soon after the decision was made to move towards this, this same delivery method. So...
Commissioner Gerber, would you have an issue with that letter requesting an in-person meeting also with the other demands that you made in that letter?
I just want to clarify, Roy drafted a letter. Was it mailed, or you asking permission for us to move forward with mailing the letter?
You, you asked me to draft the letter. I drafted the letter. I sent it to the Commissioners. I heard, heard back from none of you. So I don't know if you have issues with it, or it's okay. And if you want me to go ahead, I'll send it. But I didn't want to send it till after you have had an opportunity to review it and then let me know if that's...
Yeah, I, I appreciate the letter, and I think it needs to be done. I just think we need to specify, like Jeff said, and Dan, deadline date of response and what we expect. So, I mean, if we do it today, can we expect to have something by the end of the week? Is that asking too much, in your opinion?
I would like to include in that letter an in-person meeting with our QAW, with the, the three of us or four of us, if that's possible, and to have them deliver some of that stuff in person.
You want that meeting in person? You want it via Zoom? I can do, I can make anything...
Right. You and there, Zoom, we'll be there in person and, and sit down in front of them. I think we could get a lot more resolved that way and, and ask them to deliver that stuff in person to us than we would anyway. So just, just my feeling.
I mean, is that, since we opened the door, do we have to advertise the time of that meeting, Roy?
Could we just have...
That is an internal meeting.
I think it's an internal meeting. You're not really making any official, official decisions, but you're meeting with them, just like the evaluation committee met. I mean, you know, you can, you can review those.
Let's make it happen. Let's move forward.
So if we can make that addition, just request that happen in person with them in the letter.
Okay. If we're requesting a meeting, then do we still want to give a deadline for production? Isn't that purpose of the meeting?
Right. I would say bring it to that meeting. That's, would be the deadline for the production.
Okay. All right.
Sounds good.
Okay.
So I'm okay with that, then. So moved. Seconded.
Home favor, aye?
Aye.
Blake Gerber.
Aye.
Michael Vanover.
Aye.
Jeff Stringer.
Aye.
Three zero.
Yeah, time is the essence. We need to push this thing on right now.
Agreed. Agreed.
That's all I have.
County Farm, right?
Yes, County Farm.
Okay, County Farm. County Farm was sold at auction last Tuesday. I've got the purchase agreements. They've been signed by all the Commissioners except for Blake, so I'll need Blake's signature to that. Other than that, the agreements have been signed. I think the closing deadline is December 8th or 9th, something like that. But as soon as the agreements are signed, I'll, I'll give copies to Wells County Land Title. They're our closing agent. And the purchasers were all given a copy of the title, preliminary title commitment. Of course, the preliminary title commitment didn't have names of the purchasers, because we didn't know, and the purchase price. So they'll need to be updated to show who the purchasers were and the purchase price. Track three was a temporary description. We said basically everything north of the 1.70 cemetery commission deed, and the north would be the public drain. So I talked with Joel Hain. He's going to survey that, and once he gives me a new survey description of that tract, I'll furnish that to the title commitment, or the title company and to the purchaser. In that regard, the purchaser of track three contacted Blake and, and talked with me. He wants to buy the back end of the 1.70 cemetery deed. And I thought, well, if we had to go through all the hoops we had to to sell the county farm, we wouldn't, I mean, we'd spend more money than we took in. However, in researching it further, the next section of the code talks about sale of property to an adjoining landowner. So we could sell that back end of that lot to an adjoining landowner, which after they closed would either be Muncie Family Farms or Mr. Ish. And if, if the sale price was less than $6,000, we wouldn't have to have a formal appraisal. We could figure out what the quantity was and ration that out. But still, we'd have expenses. I think Joel said maybe 150 for a survey. The title expense would be pretty minimal because their only premium would be going up to cover the additional purchase price being paid. The legal description would be a little different, but it's, it's really up to the Commissioners. I mean, we, you, you put all the effort in in dividing this and having this surveyed, and then when it's sold, somebody wants to come in and change it, so...
Yeah. I, I don't support splitting it off. We don't know where all those graves are, and the stone markers out there are kind of scattered around. I think we risk somebody accidentally digging something up, so I'm gonna know.
Same.
I did not catch that, guys.
They're not in favor of selling the disney grounds.
All right. Let's just turn the page, because on the same boat, by the time you get your monies and runnies, it's just a lot of effort for turning pennies. So we'll take that as not moving forward and leaving the party as is. What else, Lisa, do you have for us there?
I don't have anything else.
Okay.
Rick's, Rick Haldeman's giving you a report. Rick's, Rick Haldeman's giving you a report on the post auction farm. Rick's here. I don't, I don't have a vote, but I thought you did a good job.
Yeah, did a great job, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for the opportunity.
Because we came in 20% higher than our first appraisal, correct?
Oh, one other thing on the county farm, in talking with Blake, he wanted, Blake, you asked if we had a copy of the
Fertility?
Fertility report. So I found it in my files and I emailed that to all the Commissioners together with a copy of the original lease as well as the addendum to the lease. My recollection of the, of the lease terms is that the county's supposed to pay for the tests and then we provide the tenant with a copy. And then he's supposed to do whatever he needs to restore the fertility to the pre-lease levels. So I think we've got that covered, I don't know if all the crops are off yet, but.
Yeah, the north farm still had corn in the field and that was right before the rain, we had Thursday. So I'm not sure if Caleb finalized everything, might have my wife right behind just to see where it is. I need to let Mr. Mark know when the crops are completely off that they can go in and GPS those identical locations to do exactly. We pay to study it and then Caleb will bring it back to match or exceed current levels.
So we spent paid in full. Just go for the second and stolen.
Would you mind changing to see our final payment for cash crop on that?
It was November 15th, is that today?
Today.
Yep.
So I take that as a no, but it remains within a week, it only makes a day right.
Well, and I know we've got, we've got UCC Leans because he's frequently complained about the check being made at the county as well. So hopefully, hopefully we won't have any issues.
Okay. Briefly was in an email for Ed that Roy has asked not to be reappointed for our position running forward next year. And I would like to you guys to maybe request or put out a feeler for our request for proposal. And which would include not only advertising it, actually directing it, letting to Wells County Farms that might have an interest to fill this position. And then we could maybe have an interview with those respective that reply to the request. I'm just wanting everybody's input on that, I was thinking possibly that we could do something maybe fairly soon on the request, but to have a deadline by December 10th, that if we need to interview, we can do it in the following week. And it's open for suggestions, guys.
And that would target just Wells County Farms for now?
Well, it's open to anybody, but I mean mailing a letter to Wells County Farms.
Solicit those, gotcha.
I mean, the request will be on the website, so anybody can actually apply.
Right.
But if you want anything different than that, I'm open.
I have, I have seen, I get emails from the Indiana Supreme Court. I don't know that it's necessarily weekly, but periodically, but I know it's different because it's employment opportunity. So I have seen counties list county highway or county attorney positions on that. I mean, you know, you post it statewide or you can also post it to, if you wanted to consider out of county attorneys, you could also send it to surrounding county bar associations.
We don't use this every day of the week, it says, Roy's got nine years in, I'm thrilled to.
I've always, it's, it's always been my understanding that the Commissioners wanted an application. Every year I've filed an application. It might be the same application, but I've always filed one in December. So that's, that's up to you as to how you want to treat that position, any different than any other appointed position that you fill. I saw the positions were already advertised for that, but that doesn't mean you couldn't advertise that. It wasn't advertised when I was selected, I just know Trent Patterson had asked me if I was interested. And so I went to the Commissioners' meeting just so they could see who I was and they could ask me any questions that they had. But I also sent you over the weekend, my history and I didn't do this for this meeting. I've always just kept a track so you can see the kind of hours. I don't, I don't, for me, I mean, that's, I don't have a say in it, but to me, it's, it's a little more than just a task. You're doing everything from handling workers, our workers' unemployment compensation, petitions. You're, you're doing research for auditor, the other county officials with respect to requests for public information and probably a lot of things that Commissioners may not know I do. But, you know, it's, it's been a good job and I've enjoyed doing it. It never really has reached the target when they ask, I said, well, I wanted $150 an hour. And I bill 120 for work above meetings, but when you throw in the salary checks, salary checks could look like $400 an hour, that's great. Well, you throw that in with all the other hours and it doesn't approach that, but that was my choice. But that's all.
Yeah, Katie, as you mentioned, is working with the auditor because you, you are right inside her every step of the way. Someone even wanted to ask Commissioners.
Well, I appreciate your service.
Well, and like I said, it's, I told Blake, it's like the astronaut that's sitting on top of the rocket. And you're worried because every part's made by the lowest bidder, so I'm saying, take your time to get the right person and, and, but that's all I would say.
We don't have to discuss today, but I was just thinking, in the event that you wanted it out there and wanted to interview potential candidates prior to, one thing I didn't even ask you Roy is, you're wanting us to stick around just on an unlimited basis in the transition period?
Well, I, I talked with the people that I practice with and one or both of them may be interested. And I said, you know, you're, you're also part-time prosecuting attorneys and my concern is that are you going to be able to absorb all that in your workload? And I said, depending on what the Commissioners have, I see Fort Wayne all the time in terms of what the city of Fort Wayne or Allen County's doing and not one person that could be a law firm. And so that might be a possibility, but that's, that's for the Commissioners to decide. I'm saying, hey, I'm, I'm doing it and I'm not, I'm not retiring and, and leaving the, the practice. I'm just saying this, this is more hours than, than I want to work and by giving that up, I can reduce my hours and try to have a life. But yeah, I'm still staying around and I told Colin, I said, I don't want to move all those files. I've already done that.
That's why I asked Blake, was it, was it Roy that was hired or was it the firm that was hired? That was one of my questions, early on, just so I knew.
It was, it was me individually appointed, but the checks I requested to be made to the law firm, because that's, that's my, my arrangement. I'm not a partner there, but, but they, they share in whatever production I have.
I'm good with the RFP going out and all three of us take a look at who's there and then on the 10th or whatever that is, that last, before the last meeting, let's all review them and interview who's ever interested and then make a decision then. Or if, if we can't come to a decision, at least we could work something out with Roy's firm to continue on until we do make a decision.
Okay, but we can start interviewing or talking to people at any time then, right?
I didn't hear my question.
We can, we can start interviewing or, or, or talking about this about any time then.
My, my only.
Yes.
Yeah.
My concern, my concern on a request for proposals is at least what we've done with the, with the county highway garage construction manager is you're, you're supposed to specify the duties and things like that. So if you're going to send out a RFP, maybe some considerations need to be given to that.
Yeah.
As far as what you're looking for.
Okay, Lisa probably would have something in a document or something, an attachment we could add to the website and things like that also.
I can look for something.
I bet Roy has a good idea of what the requirements are.
Right, well, I, I was, I was trying to look for whatever, I usually don't, when I get those employment opportunities at 71, I'm not looking for a new job, you know? But I tried to look to see if I can find one where there was a county attorney position advertised so I could see what other counties are saying. Now, I can come up with saying, you know, what the job is detailed and you must be able to do this or that, but, and, and also on a request for proposals, you asking them to say what they would charge or are you going to say what we're offering?
I think we should say what we're offering. I also, I don't know if we need to get real detailed on the, on the RFP other than in general because we're going to make that determination anyway.
Right.
So, and we'll have good guidance any, so.
I could say you've got to be licensed to practice along with Indiana.
Yeah, I think we should, we should look at those options, I mean, we can, we can make those determinations.
Yeah.
Yep.
That way it's not overly complicated.
That's very reasonable.
Okay. So we need a motion for that?
Yeah, let's make a motion and let's have a dead, a realistic deadline, you think December 10th is a realistic timeframe to get something back to us guys?
Yeah, well, you know, news spreads fast, so we've, I've already had people ask me about it, so I think we could, we could meet a deadline pretty quickly.
Okay, I'll do it in that fashion, that we need all the responses back by, on Friday, December 10th.
Because our next meeting is December 6th. Our next meeting, our next meeting is December 6th, so do we want to do it before that or, so at least interview?
Well, I'd like to get a deadline and then new interviews afterward.
Understood, okay.
Your interviews can always be an executive and probably should be executive session.
Okay, so December 10th?
And that would be the deadline to get them and then schedule probably interview sometime around the 13th through the 17th.
I'm, I mean, I'm okay with that.
Yeah, that gives us four weeks. And then we'll solicit, we'll send a letter to local ones also, we'll post it publicly, but can we also send one to local ones?
It's relatively easy, we don't, haven't, haven't met a lot, but I know David Crell's still the president till he dies or we have a meeting and somebody else gets reelected. So I know he's got email of all, shouldn't have email of all the local attorneys, it'd be easier just to copy that and send them.
Yeah, yep.
You know, whatever, whatever you want in terms of an RS, RFP or an application or whatever you want.
We don't have many left, right?
Three firms, sorry, we have what, four firms in the city maybe?
Well, you'd kind of be surprised.
We have quite a few attorneys.
Some closet attorneys?
Oh, yeah.
I've heard of cats sometimes.
So we need a motion on that?
Yeah, I'll, so moved. Seconded.
Home paper, aye?
Aye.
Blake Gerber.
Aye.
Michael Vanover.
Aye.
Jeff Stringer.
Aye.
Three zero. So we're just going to email and post on the website, do you want me to advertise in the paper? Yes.
Yeah.
I don't think it's necessary in the paper. The point I said, we're monopoly's going to get around pretty quick.
Already has, yep.
I have nothing else on the agenda, anything else that needs to be brought in, thanks?
I don't.
Not for me.
Please on Roy?
No.
Give the back, anybody in the audience have a question that was, meaning be addressed today? There's nothing on, except the motion in adjournment.
So moved. Seconded.
Home paper, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Blake Gerber.
Aye.
Michael Vanover.
Aye.
Jeff Stringer.
Aye.
Thank you everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you sir, get well.
And I'm flying to Waisa in downtown, can I sign?